So one of the questions that's of real concern and it relates to a proposal that both Gail and Helen made recently, I think. Broadway, from the 60s to the 90s, we lost those three supermarkets. What can we do? We know that supermarkets have a very low profit margin. What could we possibly do to entice supermarkets to come to our area? I understand that there is a proposal to deal with the commercial rent tax again on this.
Yeah.
And I know that Helen has a proposal related to that and Gail has. Well, there's two. There's one that's specific to grocery stores and there's one that's more general that you were floating at the last meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think, thank you. I think, you know, three years ago, Dan Grodnick and I passed a bill. You know, there's this commercial rent tax. Does everyone, does anyone know what this is? Okay, so you know how, you know, you're in a retail spot, right? And you pay your rent. Well, it turns out for the city in Manhattan, between 96th and Chambers and a little bit of Dumbo in Brooklyn, you have to pay tax on your rent. It's taken me a while to get my head wrapped around that as well. But, but just to get into some details for a second about it. First of all, it brings in nearly a billion dollars to the New York City budget. So it's not, it's not a tiny amount of money and, and it would be hard to lose that amount of money. Three years ago, the minimum to get taxed was if you had an annual rent of $250,000. Dan Grodnick and, and Gail had been doing it beforehand. We raised that minimum to $500,000. I have a piece of legislation that I'm working on. Let me go back a second. When we raised it to $500,000, that cost the city $50 million. It meant that we had $50 million less to pay for good services, right? So I have a bill that would raise the minimum up to a million dollars. Those places paying over $10 million in rent, their commercial rent tax would go up a smidgen so that it would be revenue neutral to the city, but it would help nearly 2,000 businesses. Gail can describe her bill, but all of this, I just want to emphasize, it's, I think, ridiculous that Manhattan should, is like an ATM for the city, that we are, just because we're Manhattan, paying an additional billion dollars in taxes that our retail shops are required to pay. Gail has one specifically on grocery stores.
Yeah, I mean, the hard part is, is the shopkeeper's, you know, the store owner. If you have a shop, you often get the pack along of the property taxes and then you have to pay rent. Now, this is another tax on top of it. So I would be very supportive of whatever the city council comes up with, but what I want to do is eliminate the tax completely from any grocery store, from Chambers up to 96th. And the reason is, their margin is about 1%. And I can add several more variables. The differences are fairly affordable shopping grocery store and they're barely surviving and the tax would make their livelihood that much better. So I hope that passes and then we'll be working on all the others. But it is unfair for Manhattan. It used to be a tax that was much broader across the city and then whoever was in the council at the time decided that portion and then had to continue to pay it. And it's very, very difficult on those stores.
I just wanted to add something. On 68th Street and Broadway, there used to be a supermarket.
Can you hear some loud voices?
I heard that I was. Okay, there used to be a supermarket and then it went out and Lowe's was in there for quite some time. But meeting and speaking with the people who live in that area, they said they wanted a supermarket. So I've reached out to all these supermarkets. I also tried to get Manhattan the first way. Well, four Brooklyn, but the space wasn't large enough for them. But it's really not my job to go prospecting for, but who's going to do it? And the brokers do a wonderful job, but it doesn't always work out and maybe we're not as attractive as we think we are. And one of the reasons is because people order from Fresh Direct, they go to Trader Joe, they go to Whole Foods. They used to go to the greengrocer on every block, but now they don't exist anymore. Or they go to the guy with the cart who competes with the gross, with the small greengrocers who are left, the vendors. So that is a problem. Grocery stores, that's always been an issue. It's now just even worse because of the online shopping. The other thing I want to say about the drugstores is there's this phenomenal pharmacy benefit managers and they have caused many local pharmacies to go out of business. And I've passed some laws to help them, but that's another reason why local pharmacies are going out of business. They can't match the prices of CVS, which owns Caremark, and that kind of industry. So that's another, another reason why drugstores can't exist here anymore.
I've been listening, honestly, and these are things that are discussed tonight that not only am I concerned about as a lifelong Upper West Sider, I love this neighborhood very much and I have great respect for everybody at this table, I mean, at the dais, shall we call it? And incidentally, although I'm not speaking on behalf of my company, I'm speaking on behalf of Community Board Seven, but I happen to be a co-vice chair of Community Board Seven with Mark Diller, our chair. So there's so many concerned people here and this is what I live and breathe. I wake up in the morning and it keeps me up at night. When I, if you ever see my name in a sign in this neighborhood, on a sign in this neighborhood, you can know that I am thinking every single day about renting that store, right? That is my job. I don't make a penny if I don't rent it, so it would be useless to put a sign in the window really unless I do. So these are things that, again, they keep me up at night. We talked about a lot of things tonight that I think are true. I think it's important to dispel urban myths and things and you don't change anything until you know what, when you have the facts. Like Neil deGrasse Tyson said, you know, you have a right to your opinion, but you don't have a right to your own facts. And so I think the tracking bill is going to get some facts, right? And so I'm happy to answer any questions. As far as supermarkets go, I know that was one of the last things that we were just talking about. Supermarkets are a very low-margin business and we all love them, we need them, but it is no surprise that Amazon is very much in the business. They now own Whole Foods. And of course Trader Joe's, I happen to like Trader Joe's, but they're a major player, 500-plus stores in America. And the mom-and-pops do compete with them, so mom-and-pop grocery stores. I love the idea of eliminating the CRT for groceries because I think they do need help. I don't know if your bill will also remove it from Trader Joe's or Whole Foods, but I know that they need the help, but...
It would be affordable grocery stores and we would define it.
Great.
That would not include those two.
Sounds great to me. But I'm here to answer any questions that anyone has. I'm here to be a resource.
I don't know if, Doug, you could answer this, but this is really to, about property taxes. Property taxes are often passed on to the tenants by the landlords. And we heard that they have doubled over a certain amount of time and we're wondering if in fact the hub of New York City is moving, if, if a lot of the activity is moving down to Brooklyn or moving down to Chelsea or whatever, what is keeping the rents up in this neighborhood high? Is it the property taxes and are they inflated? Is there something that's, that perhaps our property taxes or property values should be reassessed?
Yeah, I think those are really good questions. I think, for those who have, how many people own their apartment as opposed to rent? So you've probably, my guess is you've gone through the process of asking the city to look at what your taxes are and, and make sure there are no mistakes in that because there often are mistakes and people are overtaxed. But the assessment, it's, it's really assessments that is driving up everyone's taxes. The city, you know, doesn't have the right to, we can't on our own increase or decrease property taxes. We can, but, so it's the assessments that's driving up your property taxes. And the assessments are always a couple of years or more behind market value. So it's going to take a while for that to kick in, but we have so much luxury development going up on the West Side and a lot of it is rental and our taxes are really derived from the rental market. So I have a piece of legislation that would make all of this gobbledygook transparent. I think that all of us have a lot of good questions about why our assessments go up as fast as they do despite the fact that there are supposed to be caps on the increases. And there's a lot of thought about how renters are overpaying in taxes and perhaps that is, turns out to be a regressive tax. All of which, sorry, I've gone down a few rabbit holes, but all of which to say, property taxes are being driven by the assessments. We're not, on the Upper West Side, assessments are not on our side, they're only going up. And the city council did put together a property tax commission that will be coming out with its, its suggestions, hopefully within the next month or two. And, you know, I'm hoping there will be some ideas in there that'll help us on the West Side bring this more into line of, you know, of reality. We're getting killed. Although people will say that around the city, it's not just us.
I just want to add, the city was sued by different owners because they felt that the tax system is unfair. And they also felt that it wasn't clear, it is not transparent. What in the world is that formula that makes the assessment so high, right? It is a very non-transparent formula. So at this point, the city has to respond and that's why they are responding. One of the issues is very interesting, the reason that the co-ops and the rental buildings are so high is that the folks in Queens and parts of the Bronx where you're close to a suburban area, their taxes, single family are low because they, meaning the residents in that area, this is the actual politics of real estate and taxes. The real estate in those areas near a Nassau or Westchester border where the taxes are higher, in order to keep individuals in our five boroughs, the tax on a single family has always been lower than it has been per capita than a rental multifamily or a co-op. So if the change takes place based on a lawsuit, we may see the taxes go down on the rentals and the co-ops. Now, it's like everything else.
And then increase.
In the, in the single family. And there's a Con Ed portion and there's a commercial portion. It's a four-part discussion. But without getting into the specifics, there may be some changes. But it's like everything else, it's already so friggin' high. Will it come down enough to address some of the issues that we're concerned about today?
And let me say that apropos of the Queens and near suburban areas are what my colleagues from Queens want to preserve. And there you see just a small glimpse of how this is not a simple issue. Now, the state has to vote to let the city do this and the state has been waiting for years and years for the city, you know, before this mayor even, going back, to produce a report and a pathway to legislation that would fix the inequities that exist. But $27.8 billion is generated through property taxes. So no mayor wants to be responsible for cutting that and thus having to cut services, et cetera. But it is, we're, we're waiting on the report and I know the administration said they want to get this done in the 2020 legislative session, which begins in a few weeks. I think they have not issued their report August 2019. There were meetings, but there's no report yet. Hopefully there will be and then we can have a broad discussion about what is produced and what the state can, can work out so we relieve the burdens on some of the properties.
I just wanted to make one distinction, which obviously taxes, when you think about taxes, we're talking about all kinds of taxes. And I think what we're talking about here is what are the landlords responsible to pay and are they shifting that burden to the tenant? So tenants generally do not pay direct property taxes. Sometimes they do in leases called triple-net leases, but generally what we're talking about is a pass-through. And these are very complex provisions and leases that we negotiate. And I see some of my distinguished colleagues, I see Rafe Evans from Walker-Malloy here, who also works as hard, maybe harder than me, and Amira Yunus. And so there's a lot of people that are working really hard. So anyway, taxes are complicated and part of it is really, I have to say, caveat emptor. I, knowledge is power. We're learning a lot of things in this room tonight and I think tenants have to be educated and landlords have to be educated, how to negotiate a lease properly, having good counsel, contacting SBS. So knowing how to negotiate a lease and what your share of those taxes may or may not be. You have to, it, a lease is kind of a snapshot in time, so when you enter into a lease, there's typically a base year and then the pass-through. It's very complicated, so I want to get into it, but, but the question is how much of a burden are tenants having to pay in their taxes? And it really ultimately depends on, on what kind of deal they struck in the beginning of their lease negotiations.
So I'm gonna, I'm going to throw out a question that came out from quite a few people and it is something that's been hanging around for a very long time. The SBJSA bill, which for those of you who don't know, and now I've got to figure out my acronym now, is Small Business Survival, Small Business Job Survival Act. So it was, it's been floated since 2016, but really goes back further than that.
1980.
Thank you, Gail Brewer. And now, and it's, it was, there was a hearing at city council, maybe a year ago, but now there's a new bill that's been proposed by another city council person, Steven Levin, which is called a Commercial Rent Regulation Bill. And basically they want to put some kind of rent stabilization or rent control, if you want to call it that. Or there's a possibility, which the SBJSA was, which was about enforced lease renewal, basically. So this is something that a lot of groups have been clamoring for and I know that there's some strong opinions up here. And by the way, it's not just being introduced at the city level, but there's also a bill that's been recommended at the state level. And I believe that was by Danny O'Donnell.
No, it's Harvey.
No? Okay. Thoughts?
Well, I mean, this bill, the Small Business Job Survival Act, called by something else, was introduced by Ruth Messenger in 1980 and it has been pending in some form ever since. And I can't say why it has or hasn't. It's not, it's not an easy bill to, basically says you have to have a mediator. If their mediator and is not able with the two parties, owner and commercial tenant, then there is an opportunity for that commercial tenant to have a new lease at a certain income, certain increase. You know, you could say that's a good thing. Of course, they could also keep, you know, 7-Eleven and the Verizon store and everybody else. It's not just, you can't say only Laitners and only whatever is going to be able to stay in their space. So that bill's been pending for a very long time. There was a hearing on it. Now, I haven't as closely as maybe Helen has looked at Steve Levin, I think, and other, he's from Brooklyn, downtown Brooklyn, with the same problems we have, looking at the commercial rent bill. I mean, I think all of these are worth discussion. We are against the biggest real estate lobby you can imagine, Revny, with their new report. And I think that that's where we're at. That's why I've been, while we're trying to figure out that, I'd like to see some different leases, I'd like to see less harassment, if you can call that, of city agencies, on the small business and some of these other aspects. Until we get the data, which I went through, it's hard to be able to get any of these things to move, would be my guess. But that's just, I'm not in the council at this moment. So I would say all of these discussions need to be taking place because even though we hear, I hear over and over again, oh, Gail, the banks are getting smaller, you know, Duane Reed is retracting, you know, I said, well, the storefronts are still empty from what I can see. I still see a lot of chain stores and I'm not too good on chain stores. I don't know how you feel about them, but I'm not too good on chain stores. And I, at least in Manhattan, the larger stores want to be here for eyeballs, you know, they may not, who goes into a bank, I see all those empty desks in the bank. But for eyeballs, all your eyeballs and everybody else's eyeballs, the banks want to be in Manhattan, even though there is nobody at that desk. It's the cleanest darn desk I have ever seen in my life. But that doesn't, you know, I can't get under zoning if a bank or CVS or Duane Reed leaves. I'm not able to have mandated that that space be cut up into something that's affordable to the mom and pops. So you can see, I don't know the answers. I'm trying to come up with some possibilities when I gave you that list, but others may have other suggestions. This is, and in this room, there'll be much debate about what the answers are for these two bills. I can tell you that right now. If you want to add anything?
Gail's got it. I mean, there's, you, you have to imagine there are reasons why these bills haven't passed. It could be, and I don't, it's not like I have some secret answer. It could be that Revny, the real estate interests are just that strong. It could be, there've certainly been a lot of concerns about whether or not one of these laws, if passed, would go to court, we would be sued. And if, I, I think the concern is that, I've heard from the lawyers, is if we're sued and we lose, then we'll lose as a city even more of our power, which is always a threat and a concern and something that keeps the lawyers up at night. Steve Levin does have a new bill. We're still looking through it ourselves. I'm not signed on to it yet because I don't understand it yet and don't understand whether or not, what is so magical about it that makes it so it won't have a problem? But it seems to, I mean, it's obviously wanting to address the vacancies. I mean, I, again, I don't think you'll get an argument from anyone about the vacancies and everyone wants to fix it. The question is just, you know, these are properties that are owned by business owners and, you know, it's hard, you know, it, you know, we're not a socialist country yet, you know, despite what AOC might think, and I love her. But, you know, regulating somebody's property is obviously not easy. And it's why, for me, I keep coming back to urging people to shop at the stores. If you love your local store, if you love the town shop, shop there.
I do.
I do too.
If you love West Side Kids, you know, shop there.
I do.
Right? The problem is there are fewer and fewer of those wonderful stores and it struck me, as Gail said, in 1980, what I was referring to earlier, Ruth Messenger had a bill. So we've been debating this 80 to 90 to, it's 40 years almost. It's enough. I mean, is it too late to even get this done? And that's why we gotta pass something. We gotta take a baby, let me finish.
Sure.
You gotta take, you gotta take a baby step first. If that's all you can do, take a baby step. But there have been hardly any steps taken except for your rezoning of the stores. So we must take action. It's, it's beyond pastime. Well, I mean, I think it's why Gail and I are so proud of the storefront tracker bill. For the first time in a year and a half, we're going to have actual data. Well, that's a baby step and now we need another baby step. We took one baby step, but we need to actually get it done. And we need to talk, we need to confer, we need to negotiate, but we need to take action.
I just wanted to say, I'm going to go out on a limb here and I adore everybody that is sitting beside me here and great respect. No, 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 this is nothing, this is benign, but I, I tend and I represent landlords and tenants very equally. I am not a landlord crony nor, but I represent a lot of mom-and-pops and I'm very proud of that big list of them, particularly on Upper West Side. I lean more toward a laissez-faire approach to this and the reason for that is that when you, when you, I'm all for good legislation because good legislation keeps us safe and regulates a lot of things that we need. It's a very complicated web and a tapestry and to borrow someone that's in the audience an expression, that when you start to tug on that tapestry, you can pull on one side and then it affects another side. You've got to be super careful about what you're doing. So I have a little bit of good news, which is that I can say that there's a lot of data so many different ways and data, my cousin is a statistician and numbers, you can sort of scramble them in a lot of different ways and they can mean different things. What I am experiencing is that the rate and the pace of lease signing has been increasing in 2019 and over 17 and 18. The number of transactions has increased and I think that's a very, that's very good news. And my personal belief from my experience and my observation is that it did take a while for these rents to go up and now they're cycling back down. It's like a big luxury liner trying to turn around. It's a big market. This city is a big market and it takes a while to come up and now it's coming down. I've heard people say, and I don't know where they got it from, that the only place, the only data indicates that the rents on the Upper West Side went up and they went down everywhere else. I don't really see where the rents have gone up. The landlords that I am working for or I'm aware of generally are offering better terms. The rents are coming down. I do agree with what Gail said, if you're in an astronaut, you know, if you're paying, you know, a gazillion dollars and you bring it down to a trillion, that doesn't move the needle much. But in, but, but really of substance, there are rent reductions and even if the number, the static number that's quoted isn't necessarily lowered, the other conditions that really affect it, the net effect of rent, so better favorable conditions, maybe more free rent, maybe contributions toward the build-out, maybe less choosy about whom they will accept in a store, i.e. mom-and-pops, as opposed to only a credit national tenant that I can go to the bank and, and refinance my building with.
Let me answer you.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
Revny, just on the Revny report, just to say, Revny was flat according to the report on the West Side. The one that went down was Madison Avenue, 22%, but the West Side was flat, just FYI.
So what I want to say is Medicare is complicated. New York Health Act that we're trying to pass in the state is complicated. We can't be afraid of complicated because it has been laissez-faire for 40 years and look what we've ended up with.
Yeah. Right. So the question, and I, and I just posed this as a question, is the answer legislation? Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. So, you know, it, something. Oh, yeah.
Not nothing.
And we're all in this room here to be solution-oriented. John Leonard said, there are no problems, only solutions. We're trying to work together as a community, legislators, brokers, landlords, tenants, community, customers, shop local. So I, this is, this is a work in progress to think about, what, what is effective? You know, I, I think about when I first learned to drive a car and my instructor said, if you feel the wheels slipping a little bit, don't overreact because you'll spin out. And that's a sort of how I think about things, just be careful because we don't want to spin out, we don't want to create barriers to entry or, and I'm not afraid of complicated. I negotiated complicated leases.
Okay, we're not going to spin out, I promise.
I actually want, we only have about 10 more minutes and there is one question I want to bring it back again specifically to the Upper West Side. And it kind of moves into the vacancy tax idea, but it also runs a little And it kind of moves into the vacancy tax idea, but it also runs a little bit into something Gail's been doing with the religious and nonprofits. And so, I'm looking at specific locations, and this is a question also that came from someone else, specific locations on the Upper West Side that have been vacant for a very, very long time. And they are unsightly. They, a couple of them are landmark-designated, so it creates a huge problem. And one of them I'm thinking about is the Metro Theater up on 100th. Open, it's been, it's been closed for years and years.
Theialic.
Numerous, numerous companies and a film company wanted to rent the space, and I know Mark Levine was working with someone to try to turn it into a performing arts center and whatever. So, the question I'm going to take this to is, so it's landmarked, it's not just a landmark block, it's, that building is landmarked.
The marquee is landmarked.
It's a mess in the back because they started doing something, and they also, I think they might have sold their air rights, but be that as it may, at what point, and could you consider in a vacancy tax bill, if we, if, once we have this storefront tracker and it shows that there's no good faith being done, that it's, we know that it's been empty for a long time, can the city?
The state.
Can the state exert some eminent domain and take that space back? Because no one who's looked at it has wanted to buy it or develop it, or it's just beyond.
I'll just jump in, and then, this is my understanding. I do not know the gentleman. Somebody in the room might. I have heard he's the most difficult SOB anywhere, right? I mean, I can't, I have about 10 either friends, acquaintances, brokers, et cetera, who have met with him, you know, from Symphony Space to the Texas Movie Theater. And in every single case, and there recently to be some kind of a gym, right, et cetera. The gentleman, I've never met him. I can tell you, I have not met anybody who finds him pleasant or willing to operate in a normal fashion. So, yes, this is an example, but I think, you know, the, you know, the Bell Lord has some vacancies. I think we should look a little bit more at some of the, whether there are people who are willing to work with us. He is not. He's just not. And I, if we're going to do a vacancy tax, that would be Albany. If we're going to do eminent domain, that would be the city, just in terms of the preemption issues. But he, maybe what we should do is, as a group, is just go visit him. Right. He, he is, I have never, I cannot tell you how many people have called me after meeting with him and found it to be a very challenging experience, and I'll just leave it like that. I mean, look, there has been a whole group to save the metro, and they, they tried. That was, it's a, it's a very long challenge, and I think it's going to take some more different kind of approach. But there are other owners that have vacancies where we perhaps could be more successful.
Well, and I think that's part of the point, is that these places that have been vacant so long, there is always a story. It's not random. Although, I mean, Doug has told me about sometimes when, you know, a landlord is really asking for a high run or very difficult to deal with, whatever. But, you know, on, on Columbus, between 86th and 87th, on the east side of the street, that area's been vacant since I started office.
The brothers had a fight.
The father died, the brothers had a fight. They called us and said, "We're in court." And we got a call two years, about a year ago, saying, from one of the brothers, saying, "I won, and you're going to start to see it being filled up." And then we got plant shed, and I think some others are coming in. Now, that's a unique situation where I don't think a vacancy tax would have mattered.
In full disclosure, I represent that property.
Oh, sorry.
Well, actually, interestingly, I represent the southern portion because of the estate issue. The northern portion where the plant shed is, is not my client. It is, it is the two brothers and father. And, and I can say in all absolute truth, I'm on the phone with them all the time trying to get that rented.
Me, too.
And right, yeah. Right now, they have a scaffolding up not due to an issue with an AT&amp;T cell tower that they're trying to fix, but we are trying to get that store rented. We're entertaining proposals.
I mean, I think the other thing, if I could just mention this because it's important, we talked about scaffolding and everyone's frustrated with it. People need to keep in mind, the reason scaffolding up there is up is to protect us. I mean, no one wants scaffolding up. It costs money to have the scaffolding up, but you can't take it down until the Department of Buildings sends out an inspector and says that you've properly done the pointing or whatever it is for the building. And oftentimes, again, there are specific stories where the property owner doesn't have the money to get the work done, and so they're just bleeding money paying for the scaffolding, but they have no other choice. I mean, the church at the corner of 86th and Amsterdam, that's what's going on there. They raise money to pay for the scaffolding because they don't have the $20 million for the roof.
But, but that kind of example is far different, and it's understandable, but it's far different from all the blocks and blocks with scaffolding. And, you know, they put up the scaffolding because they have to do Local Law 11, and then they're, they don't do it. And then they keep it up because they're going to be inspected again in five years or something. So, why take it down and pay for it again?
Actually, Ben Callis has that, has a couple of bills that are addressing that, where he's questioning whether we should be reviewing the frequency of the building facade inspections, maybe five years, every five years is too much. Whether they should be giving concessions to the retail tenants who are being covered by them, whether that means lower rents, signage, better lighting for those sheds. I looked at the law myself, and the, and the requirement is very vague. And we all walk under sheds where there's lighting, but not always very good lighting.
Although, if you find yourself in a situation where there's not good lighting, call any one of our offices, and we can call the building owners and make sure they get good lighting. I mean, we can take care of that. I think, I mean, I would go back to, you know, be careful what you ask for. I mean, look at the situation with the scaffolding around the Apple Building at 72nd Street. That's been a disaster over there. We've had homeless people living there for years. Now, the scaffolding has come down, and we don't have homeless people there anymore, right? Because it's not there. I mean, we had been, I'm sure all of our offices have been calling the owner of the Apple Bank to finish the work. That was a residential property, you know, it, it's a condo.
A landmark.
They have to finish the work.
Beth, I do want to pick up, because I do think between the scaffolding, Health Department, Consumer Affairs, sanitation, and the list goes on, the government has to do better to support the small businesses and doing that with some of the issues that we listed. Because between the commercial rent that passed along and everything else that you've heard about, at least these are things we have some control over. I mean, you should not be charging people $3,000 a day because the, you know, the flower displays go an inch beyond your property line, and you have permission from the next-door storekeeper, et cetera. So, this, you know, that, to me, this is quality of life for the owners of these stores, and we have got to find a way to not nitpicking. If you put an A-frame out, I understand that, you know, you could trip over it, you're going to get a fine. So, I always go into the poor store, and I say, "Please, I don't want you to get a fine. Put the A-frame in so that it doesn't get to a fine," et cetera.
The question is, is couldn't there be something that would require the property owner to put signage up, visible signage, for those retailers? Not only, not only is it a problem for the retailers who are there, but it's also a safety issue for pedestrians, it's a sanitation issue. The other thing is, is that when there are empty stores under there, I don't know, Doug couldn't say, but I can't imagine why anyone would want to rent a store that's been under a shed that's been there for seven years.
Very, very challenging. And, and I, I think what we're talking about is, are bad actors, you know? I, I think most of the landlords that we have in our neighborhood are pretty good. There are some crazies. And the bad actors, I'm all for going after them. And the fact is that if, if a landlord has the wherewithal to repair a building, they are required to repair the building, if the scaffolding, I'm sorry, if the facade is dangerous and it, and it may hurt someone, yes, of course, the scaffolding has to go up. Nobody wants to see anyone injured. That's why the loss, the law was enacted to begin with. But if they sit and don't do anything, there's no good faith, there's no goodwill, and they're just not doing it because they figure, "Let's take the fines and just keep it into perpetuity." Maybe they don't even live in this neighborhood and they're owning the building.
I mean, are there really any businesses that are like, "Oh, meh, I'm happy to keep it up?"
Businesses or landlords?
I mean, you know, they're, it's not, they're suffering, they don't have the money to do the repairs. So, they have the scaffolding up, and it's, yes, it's ruined the businesses underneath that scaffolding, but I, I mean, there, we should be, you know, do we, does government give that property owner money to fix the store, the facade, so the scaffolding can come down?
But once again, I think that's an anomaly. I think most of the scaffolding that's up around the city is not because they don't have the money. It's because, you know, it's okay. What, what do I care?
It's too expensive.
Okay, but, but real estate, they make the money.
I mean, the scaffolding, I mean, that's a whole other issue, right? So, in order to, first, obviously, you want a landlord to comply with safety. And if they're ordered to put a scaffolding up, that has to go up. Then there are inspections. There's a bidding process, and there's a permitting process. And then, once the work has been done, and it can be dependent on weather and all sorts of other things to the, and it also may be a landmark district or landmark property, which is another layer of finessing. And then, once the work is completed, it has to be then re-inspected. So, so going back to...
All right. It's too much already.
Oh, no, no, but...
Those are good excuses for some buildings.
Oh, I'm not making excuses. I want to see these, I want to see them held to the fire. But what, but to tag with something that Gail just said, and I think it's been said a lot tonight, and Scott said it earlier, I think we need to do better in city government. We have so many different municipalities. You know that video, How Do You Pass a Bill? Well, how do you, you know, I, I see that we're...
Yeah, we have to, I'm afraid we are...
There's so many different ways that a, a store owner, restaurant, has to pass through, DCA, SLA, you know, DEP. And the bottom line is that you have to streamline the process.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'm sorry we can't ask any more questions.